Good afternoon, everyone. We want to call the meeting in order for the committee meeting, the School Board of Whitehall Copley School Directors and Whitehall Copley School District. We're going to start today with the Finance Committee meeting, and we will start with Mr. Williams.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome, everybody. All right, so we will open it up with a roll call. Mr. Malley?
Mr. Fonzone.
Present.
Mrs. Gogler.
Here.
Dr. Hartman.
Here.
Mrs. Cromer.
Here.
Mr. Kubat.
Here.
Mr. McCool. Mr. Salum.
Present.
Mr. Shields.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Eight present.
All right, thank you, Mr. Malley. We do not have any public participation, and I'm aware of. Okay, very good. So we'll move along to the financial impact items. Mr. Malley?
Okay, we have, first up is the postage machine lease. Our 60-month lease is up with Document Systems, and we're recommending extending that another 60 months. It's actually a $5 decrease from what we're currently paying. So it's $245 a month, and I would recommend moving forward with that, unless I hear any questions. All right, the second item is Conrad Siegel for the Affordable Care Reporting. This is the second year of that contract, and we're looking to approve that again for a second year. That is the required calculations we need to ensure that the district complies with the Affordable Care Act. Any questions on that? Okay, and then sharing, you'll be asked to approve Hope Stakes as the new trustee on the Lehigh, or I'm sorry, on the library board. And the only other item we have is PSBA election of officers. There's a president, vice president, and the two trustees for the insurance trust, and there are no contested ballots. So we'll be bringing that, all of their information is attached. But like I said, there's, nothing's uncontested, and we'll put those on for approval at the next meeting. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Malley. Any questions for the Finance Committee? Okay, Finance Committee meeting adjourned at 4:04 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams and Mr. Malley. Moving on to education, and that will be Mrs. Gogler.
Thank you. Same roll call as before. The meeting opens at 4:05, and I will turn it over to Mrs. Saleet.
Thank you, Mrs. Gogler. Thank you, Mr. Fonzone. A few things this evening to review. We do have one new policy that is being presented. We're not sure if this will be on for approval for the September meeting. We're still working through some things on the back end, but wanted to bring it before the board. So it would be the addition of Policy 719 for unmanned aircraft systems or drones. So this would give us the ability to have drones on campus. A few things to highlight in the policy under guidelines. So this would be very specific. The operation of any drone on district property would strictly be limited to district staff or for business officially initiated by the district. So this would be things we are looking to do. Mr. Shields?
Well, I was just going to add that the policy's one piece of this. We are looking at insurance for the use of a drone on campus. So without having things in place, we would not look to do this, even though the policy may be in effect, because it is contingent upon having proper notification and information for insurance purposes.
Thank you. So there is an approval form and an approval process. This would have to be pre-approved by the Superintendent's Office. There is an attached form that we have created to go along with this. There are obviously many implications that go into place with this, so they are all listed there within the policy. We do have some policy revisions that we are bringing before you for first reading and approval at the next meeting. So 317.1 is educator misconduct. The only update, this is all PSBA updated language. The only update here is on the last page under discrimination and harassment. The phrase Title IX, sexual harassment, was added in as one of the pieces. That is the only update with that one. Policy 320, freedom of speech by employees. There's some updated language in here, really just to explain that employees are private citizens. I mean, it goes through, they don't surrender their freedom of speech rights, but it does have simple things in here talking about what is appropriate, what may not be appropriate. And it did add in at the end that any, so this is a change, "Any decision based on the above listing shall be taken into consideration, all of the facts of what occurred." Previously, the language just didn't really leave any room to investigate situations, so this is putting in some more protections for the employee. Policy 323, tobacco and vaping products. This updated language, it removed, it used to have the term Juul in there, which was a very common vape that was out when vapes really started to come about. So the policy has now removed the term Juul and just put in tobacco products, including e-cigarettes, to include all of the different brands. So that was taken out in several places. And then just a slight change on the reporting, the annual school safety and security incidents report. So previously, it just said the reporting to the Office of Safe Schools. Now it lists the title of the report, and it also changed, previously, it could get reported to the school resource officer or, like, police department. Now it's, anything that happens must be reported to the Pennsylvania Department of Education. Policy 718, service animals in schools. So there was significant language added to this policy, very specific to what we can and cannot ask for if there is a request for a service animal. So if it's, before approving the request, we only can ask if it's required due to a disability and what work tasks the service animal is trained to perform. And then it has a section in there of what we cannot ask. So we can't request documentation of the need. We can't request documentation regarding training of the animal, demonstration of the animal's abilities, or inquire about the nature of the individual's disability. They also added a section in here on reasonable modification considerations for miniature A section on surcharges. We can't require a surcharge if someone is bringing in a service animal. And those are the additions to that policy. Policy 815, these came as recommendations from our Tech Pool Legal Counsel and our Supervisor of IT. So there is some significant updated language in here that really goes to all of our cybersecurity insurance, everything that we've been adding. Obviously, technology continues to grow and grow in its importance of what we're doing every day, so we put in specific language regarding our technology resources that we use in the district, different protection measures that we're putting into place. We put in a new definition for a user, which is anybody who utilizes or attempts to utilize our tech resources, just because we do have so many different visitors and people coming in. There is a section about our user agreement, so we do have parents sign off on an acceptable use policy, and we have our staff sign off on acceptable use. So that goes into every piece of the appropriate ways to use the technology. For instance, you know, don't leave your computer unattended logged into your device because if somebody else goes on it, does something, when you leave it unattended, it comes back to you as the users. So that has been updated in that policy. And, hold on, just want to make sure that's it for policy. Oh, and we have a conflict of interest policy, Policy 827. There is a section that was added in that just defines who the conflict of interest includes. So it's when the employee, officer, agent, board member, or any member of their immediate family, their partner, or an organization that employs or is about to employ any of those individuals has a financial or other interest in a tangible personal benefit. Essentially, it's a complicated way of defining what the conflict of interest means and who it applies to. They also changed one piece of language in here. Previously, it was no public official or public employee shall accept an honorarium, and now it's no board member or district employee shall accept an honorarium. That's all that was updated in there. So those are the policies that we will be looking to move on for approval at the end of the month. And we have just a couple administrative regulations. AR 113.2, AR 1 falls under our special education policy. It is titled Behavior Support. This is a new administrative regulation that is being recommended for us to add. It goes through the pieces of supporting any of our special education students who have behavioral needs. It talks about positive behavior support plans, de-escalation strategies that we may use with them, talks about different techniques that we can or cannot use, focuses a lot on communication with families and what's written in the IEP for the student. It also goes into physical restraints, mechanical restraints, and seclusion. And then there is a section on reporting procedures. So anytime that any of those types of restraints occur, we do have, we are bound to report them to the state, so we have a specific form that we use to report that. So all of that information is included in there. We have AR 220, AR-1, which is student expression dissemination of materials. None of the language changed in here. There just used to be a form that went along with this that essentially had the exact same language. So we removed the form and just made sure all the language was held within the AR. AR 341, AR-1, supports staff excessive absence procedure. So nothing in the AR language changed. There is a form that was attached to this. That form, the language in the form did not match the AR, so we updated it so that they do match. And then the last one is AR 815, AR 6, which is technology inventory. So it is a process that just outlines how we inventory our technology and keep track of all of the devices and pieces of hardware that we have. So we are just asking the board to acknowledge those ARs. The last thing under policy is every year we have to update our fee schedule for Policy 707, which is our use of facilities. So the attached form reviews the 25-26 fee schedule. So that is all I have for policy and AR updates. We do have one revised job description that's on here. Dr. Hollup is going to come up to talk about that for a moment.
The revised job description that is listed on here was previously as an autism consultant or facilitator. We are looking to revise that to be a special services consultant, to allow us to use that for students who are identified with more than autism. We would like to use that for our emotional support students, MDSB students, and as well as our artistic students, to be able to be more of a consultant across all of those need areas to provide our special ed teachers with more support. So this job description has been, the title was changed, and the description itself was modified slightly, not significantly, to open it up to cover all of those areas.
I have a quick question about the case load for that particular person serving that role. What is the case load change from what they have now?
Okay, this, there is currently not a person in this position. This position is open. It has been open for almost a year now, and we were not able to get an autism consultant, limited to just that. So the position remained open, and we're hoping to draw someone. This is a non-teaching position because they support all of the special ed teachers throughout the district. That would be MDSB, emotional support, or autism, or work with students with autism.
So just one slight clarification. This role was previously held by an employee that left. It was the MDSB facilitator. So we do currently still have an autism consultant that's here, the MDSB facilitator. That person vacated the role. We weren't able to fill it. So we are just looking to broaden the support that this individual can provide to all of our specialized classes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hollup. We do have a Valley Youth House MOU that is attached, so we do work with Valley Youth House regularly. This is an MOU just for the bounce-back program, so it is individual and group counseling that Valley Youth House comes in and does with our students. So we are looking for approval for that MOU. Also looking for approval and implementation of our 25-26 Emergency Operation Plan as attached there. Looking to approve the affiliation agreement between the Whitehall Copley School District and the University of Pittsburgh. This would be for practicum and student teaching experience for students coming from the University of Pitt. And now I would like to invite Dr. Mays up to talk to us about graduation.
Okay. Just take a few moments to share some of the information in a summary way over the different possibilities for graduation in this year. I did share with the board examples of what an estimated cost would be for PPL, for Stabler, for Coca-Cola Park, and I would mention a very rough estimate for what it would take to hold here at Zephyr Stadium. When you look at those sort of estimates, you know, all within a certain ballpark, most of our fixed costs, most of our costs are generally fixed. Catering, diplomas, gowns, flowers, supplies, printing, student achievements, and technology services are the same, no matter where we would host it. Really, we're talking about the venue, if there's an equipment rental charge or change or security and staffing. So in a lot of the estimates, you'll see, like, for example, with the PPL Center, when we pay that cost, our equipment and security are baked into the cost. The really only one where it's not, Stabler would be the same, Coca-Cola Park would be the same, is Zephyr Stadium. To have it here, obviously, we don't have any of the equipment. We don't have the chairs. We don't have the stage. We don't have those materials. And we would need to employ security to match the same security we would have at the other three sites. We would likely need metal detection. We would likely need additional security more than we would do even for Friday's Hall of Fame event. So, because we'd be anticipating, if you were here on Friday, we had about 3,000 people here at the stadium. For graduation, we would probably be at our max between 4,000 to 4,500. So think of another 1,000 people on site using the facilities. So based on that, and I've also shared what our historical costs have been over the past, you know, three years with PPL. Due to the timing, it is September. Graduation is slated for June. It's my recommendation to the board to permit us to table changing the site from the PPL Center for one calendar year. It's my recommendation of the board that we return to PPL for the class of 2026. To do any of these other changes, as we've gotten deeper into the planning process, it can be done, but I think there is an expectation, particularly for our building administration, to hold a very organized, efficient, safe, and orderly graduation ceremony. And I think we've done that year after year, prior to my administration and now. I think it's better for us to continue on the path we are on for one more year. It's my recommendation that we put together a steering committee, probably to start this fall, really analyzing if we want to make a change for the class of 2027. That may be some board members, that may be some parents, that may be some faculty, that may be some admin, and I would really encourage us, also students of the class of 2027, need to have a voice, off-class officers and such to do that. We're very happy I've included the PPL contract for June in today's committee meeting because it's my recommendation that as a board, we move that, you move that forward for the end of the month for approval, allowing us to lock in the date and then begin the planning process. We're not too far behind our normal schedule, but if we would wait another month, if this would go into October, we're really risking a lot of impact to make sure that event goes smoothly. I would be honest, just to be transparent, I'd really like us to discuss it, but I don't want to force it and have it not be at the quality that we expect. And I think with the shortened timeframe, I think we would risk that, and I don't want to do that to the class of 2026.
Dr. Mays, basically, the, your comparison sheet, right now, the biggest difference is the cost of the venue. Everything else fairly consistent.
It always is. And those, the venue cost is not one we control, but the others we do. For example, we've talked about is our staging and flowers, the most efficient use of the funds that we have. We look at gowns and caps and gowns. We, you know, we've started to reclaim them from faculty when they resign to have cleaned and reused. So we have these efficiency protocols in place, and I think we can bring it down slightly, but the venue is the venue.
Okay. I would add, I do appreciate your continued work on this, Dr. Mays. We've spoken quite a bit. I do, I'm not sure what the board's feelings are at this point in time, which we can certainly follow up in discussion. I do support Dr. Mays' recommendation tonight. I think there's still a lot to be looking at, and we continue to lose valuable time as far as what date we need to put in for this year's class. We certainly don't want to risk anything. And to clarify, with our own venue, Dr. Mays, we would really be turning away a significant amount of people if we did it here, given the numbers that our stadium can hold.
Yeah, at the PPL Center, we currently issue around 5,000 to 5,500 tickets. The venue would be smaller here. We'd have to address that. Currently, we're able to give out 12 tickets per family and more if needed. So again, a committee really needs to look at all of those pieces. And again, the students must have a voice in this. We've done a really nice job of this over the years. It's, graduation is the ultimate focus for the high school, and we want that to be as close to perfect as possible. I don't want to risk not having that because it's worth talking about these things. It's another thing to make sure that it is as perfect and pristine as we're accustomed to.
Yeah, Dr. Mays, you just nailed it on the head. You mean not to rush into it for this year? Because being on a committee, you know how things go when we try to rush things, but to have a committee for all the voices, kids, and you said board members, other people, community to see, weigh the value, hey, if we do have it on your chart, you're saying compared to one, to the other, the total four, what would be, what would this community want? And what's the safest for our community also?
Yeah, I agree with you. There's so many variables that go into it. We just want to make sure it reflects accurately, and it is that safe, orderly, efficient ceremony that we've come to appreciate. Thank you. Any other questions or anything else I can add?
I would go along with what your recommendation is. I think that's proper at this time, and you've done a great job of always having everything together. So this is laid out well for a committee, your steering committee, to look at, and you could really dissect it and get down, dig deep, and come back with probably a solid recommendation.
Yeah, we would probably want to do that in the spring to get ahead of our May 15th, sort of wrap up and get together for the next school year. Mrs. Saleet, I would recommend then for the committee to move the PPL agreement ahead for board approval at the end of the month, if that is the desire of the board. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Mays.
Thank you, Dr. Mays. And that is all I have this evening, Mrs. Gogler.
Thank you. We'll close the meeting at 4:26.
Oh, I'm sorry. So pending graduation date would be June 1st, 2026. Thank you, Mrs. Hunger.
Thank you, Mrs. Gogler. Moving on to operations, Mr. Salome.
I got the best thing ever. Same board, Angus, it's at 4:26, and I would like, there's nothing on the agenda, so I'll close it at 4:26. Yes, I do have a discussion. On operate, on there, we do have, I guess, when we do track and field or any facilities during spring, this past week, I was there for several hours, and when you look around the track, around the bend, closest to the football field, the track on the inside curve, it's all worn out. So if we can look into, I guess, the cost of resurfacing it or patching it, and then if we do have any guests or anything with that, will we charge them, and will that go to the general fund for any future maintenance?
Yeah, I will speak to that. I was not aware of any issues with the track, but I did speak with Mr. Scrappits today. I've asked that Mr. Puckson have an opportunity to go up there and evaluate things as well. We talked about the budgeting, which would be at least $50,000 to resurface. That's not something we're prepared to do right now, but we can look at that for the upcoming budgeting season, and we can look at what costs we could do to do some repair work in the interim so that it's a safe, a safe playing field, if you will, as far as track surface is concerned. So we'll continue to dig into that.
Thank you, Mr. Scherfer, and that's all for me.
Thank you, Mr. Salome. Yes? Well, Mark Alagranzi again. How you doing? Didn't budge my name up this time. That's because he didn't say it. But I'm here, a follow-up with Assistant Superintendent Saleet about YouTube video from last year that was put private about two and a half weeks ago. Is there any way that could be publicized so I can use it as a reference?
So we actually, we're just looking into some backend language and policy, just to see what we would have to do to do that for you, so I could touch base with you after the meeting.
Oh, sure, great. Okay, thank you.
Is there a presentation you need to make about the new services? To avoid being sprinkled twice this year? I don't know, I'm just...
That's clear, it wasn't...
Yeah, good point. I think we, go ahead.
We have a plan placed for that, yeah.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, we will make sure that that is communicated.
It did work well with, with the sporting event, but for the other event, people just parked on the grass. For the Zephyr thing, I don't know why, but they just did. So you're, you're working on that, and that was something that was brought out, so. And it's important, obviously. Can't afford to have our sprinklers wrecked because...
I did follow up, I did, I wasn't expecting this to be discussed, but I did follow up with Mr. Scrappits. It looks as though that piece which was replaced is not completely damaged, so I think we'll be okay there, thankfully. That was the initial report that I, that I received. So since it was brought up, we did invest in some signage, which helped quite a bit. The problem is when we have major events on campus, such as a back-to-school, meet the teacher, or we have big track events later in the spring, people just park wherever they want, and it is extremely difficult for our campus to control that, which has been some of our hesitation in hosting big events. And I think sometimes the community doesn't understand why that would be a problem for us, but it is a problem for us as far as the damage that it does to our surfaces. This is not an area that we can just sidewalk and curb because there are drainage issues to be concerned with. It's been talked about before, and I don't believe that is an option for us. So it causes a real problem when we have major events. So we will make sure that we are communicating that as much as possible. It'll be in all of our newsletters. It will be in all of our media. It will be everywhere that we can put it. And we will continue to use signage to try and thwart people from parking on grass.
And lastly, just, I'm also the representative from Whitehall School District on the LTRIC Board of Trustees, and just a point that... And just a point that in our last meeting, financially, obviously, there's a, right now, with the budget not being approved, there are some issues, but they are financially stable, which is very good. Our money that we support them with and our students, we're okay. And I did get a fact sheet from the foundation that supplies scholarship opportunities to the students in the area. And this, just, obviously, the list that shows huge amount of scholarships available to students in a variety of categories, and simply if a senior is, or a junior at this point, looking to, looking for some scholarship help at LTRIC, we should contact our guidance department, and also they will work with LTRIC in making sure that they get all the opportunities they should. The foundation is very, very financially stable. And they're expanding their, even their scholarship offering. So it's a good opportunity for us to make sure our students understand. And also that if it's adult education, that's an also opportunity that our community should be aware of. So I just bring it up that there's opportunities out there for education, and we should take advantage of it if we can. And that being said, we're going to adjourn our meeting.
President Fonzone, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Initially, I wanted to tell you thank you for that phone call on that Saturday morning, because I was in bed sleeping, and it was a great phone call. That's what I really wanted to tell you, not to botch name. But I wanted to tell you thank you for that, all that great talk. I just couldn't make it because,
Okay.
you know, a lot of stuff. But today, I could make it, walk around the building to find this place. I think my mother used to work here for a cleaning company back in like 90, 92. We used to clean. It was an outside company, so we used to, you know, mops and stuff like that, you know? It was a while back.
Thank you. See you at the regular board meeting at the end of this month. Thanks for everyone for coming.